I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is May 9th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adal Mosip is on his way.
Is on his way, yes.
James Thorpe here. Chair Mary Pelichkov.
Here. Next item, please.
Discussion item: 2019 Fall Semester Proposed Tuition Increase.
Madam Chair, would you like me to address the board?
Oh, I would just like to take a moment, for those of you, and I don't know how many are here, I do know some, to recognize the passing of one of our former board members who was one of our longest-serving board members, besides Mary Lane, actually, and that was Pam Adams. You might have known her as Pam Wondus originally, and she died unexpectedly early this morning. So, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that loss. Thank you. I know she was a dear friend to most of us on the board here. We, almost everybody here, served with her at one time or another, so she'll be greatly missed. All right, President Cavalluna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, Vice Chair Barry, I appreciate you all coming to order on a short notice before we are about to have a really enjoyable experience in the auditorium next to us for our early college graduation. And I ask for the opportunity to address this issue with you because I realize it's a difficult issue. It is an issue where I am asking the board to consider a tuition increase for our college. And I would like to take several minutes to explain to you how we come here, what I have evaluated as my basis for recommending you look favorably upon this. And then, what I think is most valuable for difficult decisions for this is to have you have an opportunity to ask me questions of the administration, give you an opportunity to publicly disclose anything you find wanting in our analysis, and/or frankly give constructive criticism on what we're proposing here. When I asked to be your colleague as president, I asked for the opportunity to be your partner. And I believe partners treat each other with respect, and one of the ways to do that is to tell you everything I know about an issue before giving you a recommendation, and then giving you an opportunity to tell me what you need to know to make your decision. Of course, the partnership isn't truly a partnership. The reality is you all are the leaders of this institution, and you are vested with the important decision of what the tuition should be here. So, I've taken the time to develop what I think are the salient issues that should be before you, recognizing that a public discussion in the kind of democratic leadership process that we have for our college has to happen here in public, and I appreciate your willingness to allow that kind of discussion on short notice. We put this meeting together on two or three days, and I appreciate how quickly you came to the call. I did receive, as the chair mentioned, I did receive a text message from Trustee Mosip. He explained he's on his way, and if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll just proceed into some of the topics I'd like to address on this issue.
Yes, please.
You all have seen, I hope, a document that has a picture of the property tax catchment areas. That's before you on the screen there. And this shows what a community college in southeast Michigan has as its footprint to collect taxes. Now, you might ask, why is Cavalluna showing me this in a tuition issue? And the reason why I'm showing you this is because our geographic footprint to collect taxes is smaller. I know that that's not news to you, but I did find that several people who have been associated with the college for many years were surprised to actually see it geographically displayed. And you can see that Henry Ford College is relatively small in its footprint for the taxes that we can collect. And percentage-wise, we derive revenue from three sources, and one of them is property taxes, and that makes up about 15 percent of our operating revenue. Now, there's been decades of debate about whether that's appropriate for this community or not. I'm not here to debate that. What I'm here to say is that's the world we live in, and it's a little bit tight here, Trustee Mosip.
And we just started.
Thank you.
One of the reasons why there is value in this footprint being small is because the representative, elected representatives of this body come from this town, and we all know what our town is like. We all know what the political issues are, and I'm glad and appreciative that you all get to deliberate over these difficult questions in a small context. If you look at Wayne County or Oakland, these counties have people in your positions from a much wider geographic area, and so what I'm saying to you is, there is a really strong value in us being small, in that we have Dearborn residents, or Dearborn Heights and Dearborn residents, just so happens you all are residents of Dearborn, to help make this decision. But if you look at the top of the page, you'll see that we have a significantly reduced amount of income from property taxes. Now, we just renewed one of the mills, and you can see on this document that we are at four mills, which is higher than most of the community colleges around us, and I took a sampling of the community colleges around us. And you know, and see that our revenue is about $13 million, or almost 15 percent of our revenue. Contrast that with what our income reliance on tuition is, and that's about 52 percent. So, there are several things that happened over the last, I would say, frankly, three months that caused me to change what was initially my analysis, and that was this proposed budget that you all saw at our last meeting, that you see here on your screen, and for your paper copies, that's Schedule B. We were analyzing a no-tuition-increase budget, and I have since changed my analysis of whether that's appropriate or not. Now, before I go into the details of this budget, I think, and most of you, when I've individually discussed this with you, have said to me, hey, what are all the other institutions doing? What are the history of the other institutions that are similar to us and/or not similar to us? And I gave you many pieces of information, but one of those that I find most useful is the 28 community colleges that are in our state over the last 10 years and what they've done. And you can see that if we look at last year's tuition for in-district, we are second, third to last, or 26th out of 28, hovering down in under $100 per credit hour. And for context, size of the institution matters, and I wanted to give you some idea about that. So, you all know that there's different ways we measure our size as community colleges, but one that is, I think, most relevant for the tuition question is credit hours, or contact hours, and if you charge differently, then the difference in those. And most colleges do charge differently, so contact hours tends to be a good metric. And I just pulled data for the fall of 2018, so the last, and you all know that the fall is one of the large, usually the largest enrollment terms. So, if you look at what Henry Ford College did as far as credit hours for the fall of 2018, you can think of 105,000 credit hours in that fall. So, if you, I think it's fair to bunch us in colleges that deliver at least 100,000 credit hours. So, but what are the others? And then contrast by looking on the screen here what the in-district tuition rate is. Grand Rapids, for comparison, had, in the fall, 116,000 credit hours. So, you go to Grand Rapids, and they're at $113 for in-district per credit hour, and they're at 116,000 credit hours. So, a little larger than us, but certainly in the ballpark. Another college that's similar is Macomb Community College. They came in significantly larger than us, but still in the kind of the top run, 176,000 credit hours. And I've showed you on the chart there that they're at, at least last year, they were at $100 per credit hour. Some of you have asked me about Oakland Community College. They did 126,000 credit hours, and they are at 90, and they're, they're going up this year but still below us, 125,000 credit hours there. Washtenaw Community College was at 100,000 credit hours, and then Wayne Community College is at 110, 110,000 credit hours. So, that's some comparisons about where those institutions are compared to us. Now, I also showed you a document that described what institutions are planning on doing as they and their trustees sit in your literal same seats when their presidents are asking for them to reevaluate their tuition. Jackson, and just for reference, Jackson is a similar college in geography, but not in size, but I put them on there because I just want to show you that they also have a low property income tax, I'm sorry, property tax revenue, and they are coming in at 45,000 credit hours last fall, so less than half our size, and they're at $152 per credit hour, and they've asked their board to go up by 3.27 percent, up to 157. Now, I'll tell you, that 3.27 percent is not by mistake. If you know Dan Phelan, the president of Jackson Community College, you'll know he's very ingrained in Lansing politics, and that 3.27 percent matches very closely with what is moving to the legislature now, is what we expect will be the tuition cap either this year or next year. Lansing Community College, just for context, they do 106,000 credit hours in the fall, which is nearly the same as us. We're at 105. And Lansing was at $105 an hour. They've asked their board to go up 2.86 percent to $108. Macomb, they've asked their board, and I did talk to President Sawyer recently, he, their board did vote to raise their tuition to $102 per credit hour. Monroe, they've asked their board to go up by 2.5 percent to 112. You've got Oakland Community College asking for a 3.26 percent increase to $95 per credit. Schoolcraft asked their board by 2.6 percent, and if they get that, they'll go up to 118. Washtenaw Community College is a 0 percent increase, and I've talked to President Blanca, and one of the things that she's focusing on like a laser is that she's asking her community to pass a millage. And I do believe that that has some effect on that analysis there. Of course, our request is from $99 up to $101.50 per credit hour. And if you look back over the last five years of increases, you'll see that Henry Ford College has increased its in-district tuition by a little under 14 percent. That compares favorably to what these institutions, and I selected these institutions because they are in our vicinity on the map, and they have at least some similarity either in the students that we serve or the size of, and the size that they serve. So, those, that's kind of an environmental scan of the, of what, if I were in your shoes, I would want to know, what are other institutions doing? Now, one question you might ask is, well, how is it that we've been able to be competitive with $99 per credit hour in district while having a significantly smaller tax capture and also serving 105,000 credit hours? And I don't think you're hearing many complaints about the quality of our education. I mean, I'll be candid with you. One of the reasons I asked to be your colleague as the president is because you had and still continue to have a very, very high reputation for the quality of the educational product. And I'll tell you, I think the answer why we've been able to hold this down, this competitive pricing, is seen in this document. This is a listing of the 28 community colleges in Michigan, and how much money in dollars they spent in 2009 and 2010 per full-time student. And of course, we decide full-time students in our business by taking all the credits and dividing it by the number of heads, and that kind of gives you a rough estimate. Is if all of our students went full-time, that would equal one full-time equivalent. And you're going to see here that this is ranked from 1 to 28, and that shows you that in 2009, Henry Ford College was the third lowest in how much we spent to deliver our educational product per full-time equivalent student. You also see that the average, we were at 20 percent below the average. And I know some of you are interested in what the relationship that is to our full-time faculty, so I added a column there to show you, what are these institutions doing with full-time faculty? Because if you looked at our expenses last year, instruction is 50 percent. Nothing even comes close. The expense of running a college and doing it well is with the instructional costs. And so, you can see that there are some bits of information about, well, were we heavy on faculty? Were we not heavy on faculty? Where are these institutions? And I'll tell you, this document shows with clarity that we have managed both quality and expense. That was in 2009, and we were at 80 percent of the average. If you go to last year, maybe, here it is, no. You have these on paper, so I'll point it to you on paper. If you go to last year, it's the same chart, but it is for fiscal year, I'm sorry, the year 2017 and 2018. And what you'll see is, we're still in third. We're still the third lowest expense. Is that showing for you guys as 18? No, it's still 10. It's the document that is here.
There are two.
Yeah, there are two. One is for 2018, one is for 2010. And I wish I could show you on the screen because it would show a lot nicer, but you'll see that we are still the third lowest. And we actually have, last year, we had less faculty than we did in 2009. We had 163 faculty. So, what I'm saying to you in this document is, we have managed to keep quality high by still spending less than 27, 25 other community colleges per student to deliver the education. And the reason we've been able to do that is because of the administration has held costs, and this document shows that. I know when, I expect when you look at this question, you're anticipating constituents to ask you, are they managing costs well? And you can say, in 2017 and 2018, they were still, per full-time student, they were still spending less than 25 of the 28 community colleges per student, and we still had 163 full-time faculty. So, that's your environmental scan of where we are. Now, there are three things that change my mind about whether we should have a tuition increase. The first is whether we were going to get state aid in the realm that we had hoped. The governor has proposed a budget that would increase state funding to community colleges by 3 percent. I've sent you legislative updates almost weekly now, and you know that the budget will likely get passed in September for the fiscal year beginning with the state in October. So, we're stuck having to make this decision before they do. They will. It's a problem that you all probably encounter in your duties over the public school district, and it's a problem that this community college faces. But I have to tell you that the House of Representatives has now passed out of its subcommittee a 1 percent increase for tuition for community colleges. The Senate has passed out of its subcommittee a 1.5 percent increase, and both of them are looking to cap tuition increases at 3.2 percent. That's never happened in the state of Michigan, as far as I know, in community colleges. It's been the case with universities. So, it's clear to me that they're looking to restrain tuition increases. So, if you are, if you are, as I mentioned before, someone that sits on the board of Jackson, it's not a mistake that Dan Phelan's asking for 3.27 percent there. The community college world is recognizing, there's a reckoning coming on how much we can raise tuition. I'm just giving you that as context. And so, that's one of the reasons that I'm unsure about what we're going to get for revenue and how we need to look at whether we should keep increasing our costs in tuition to keep up with the decrease in enrollment revenue from the state. The second, the second reason that this is probably, I'm convinced this is the right thing, is what I've already described. Next year, I suspect we're going to get a tuition cap. It may even happen this year, and then the years out, I do expect the legislature will cap enrollment, probably in an exchange for the idea that community colleges will get some type of my connect, my reconnect or my opportunity, which would be known as tuition for your community college. Unknown whether that'll pass, but those are two things that kind of lock your hands as oversight of this college and what you can do with tuition. So, if, God forbid, we had to come back and ask for a significant tuition increase in the out-years, I think the legislation would require us not to do that. The third thing, and this is, this is one of the unknowns that I've tried to be candid with you all about, that I really don't get, I don't have a handle on where we're going. And that is, you're going to see in the budget that I originally proposed a deficit in fiscal year '21 that is $4.5 million. Now, the majority of that is from an increase in funding our full-time faculty to 200 members. And I continue to work with the AFT on this question. I can report strong and productive conversations with the president and the leader of the AFT, but right now, our contract requires by the fall of 2020 that we have 200 full-time, and that's what I'm required to show you here in this budget. So, if we were to not increase tuition now and then increase tuition next year, we'd still be down $4.5 million. So, I have elected to try to take some of the medicine now with hopes we won't have to take any more medicine, but knowing that we may have to take more medicine. And I just don't, I don't believe we would legislatively be allowed to increase tuition by 5 percent next year, even if I could convince you all that that was the right thing to do, because I think the legislation would stop us. But I think 2.5 this year and then reevaluate next year is a more wise choice. Now, here are some of the things that are big obstacles financially that I need to tell you, I think are important enough to ask for a tuition increase. There are two major construction projects. One is the extension and revitalization of the tech building. We worked really hard to get $6.7 million of state taxpayer dollars to fund that. We're obligated to come up with $8.2 million of that. We're working like the Dickens to get philanthropy to help us with that, but if it doesn't happen, we have to fund $8.2 million. And folks, Henry Ford College is a technical school. That's our, that's our name. It would be a terrible sign for me as president to say to the state, I'm sorry, we asked for this money, we want to grow our technical building, and we just can't come up with the funding. The other, yes?
When are we obliged to start that, have the funding available for that project?
There is no sunset on it. We could put it off several years. However, I do think that the legislation that would be required to pass construction, and the legislation comes in two phases. One is authorization for planning, which was what happened in December, and then once you get your planning authorization complete, you get the state to accept that, and then it requires legislation to fund construction. I think it would look very poorly on that secondary ask for construction if we had waited three years, or especially when the state is trying to bridge the skills gap, and I have marketed us as willing and able to do that. The next major construction project is what you all looked at when interim President Sackowski brought to you the idea of the Integrated Energy Master Plan. That is a plan that will essentially review and overhaul our entire campus for energy efficiency. There's two major reasons why that's really good policy. One is that it will reduce our energy expenses on the energy side by 60 percent and water usage by 40 percent, so much to the extent that the organization that will contract with us guarantees that the expense for the project will pay itself in 10 years, and then in the out-years, it'll continue to return reward financially to the college. That expense, when you all first had it proposed to you, was $23.5 million. That was a little bit more than a year ago, and I expect when we finally start moving on this, it'll be at least $23.5 and maybe $24.5 million. So, if you say $24 million and $8 million for this tech building, we're above $30 million. And so, many have asked me, well, why don't you use reserves, which the previous administrations have worked hard to deliver us in the realm of $25 to $27 million? But the last time this college spent that kind of reserve, it found itself in a real crisis, and I think it would be unwise for us to spend that reserve. Most auditors will tell you that you should have between 10 and 15 percent of your operating budget in reserves, and our operating budget is anywhere from $90 to $110 million. So, we need to protect that reserve. I can't use that reserve in good faith. I need to fund these projects, and I need to find a way to deal with our obligations to our faculty and our staff, which is the last point I'll just say. Nothing in this world stays the same price when you deliver, and we have four collective bargaining units that are obligated to have raises. And I'm going to talk with them about how we can handle that, but the reality is, that is why all these other institutions are raising tuition, because the cost to do business goes up. I know that that's a hard reality, and I would like it to be zero. But I have to tell you that I've looked at it, I've analyzed it with two of the sharpest folks on this who are in the room now and have brought this college through very difficult financial situations in the past. And if you have interest in talking with them individually, I'm completely open to having you talk with them. I think you know I'm talking about John Sackowski, Brian Bain. I'm convinced that if we can turn enrollment around, if we can increase state aid, if we can manage expenses, we'll come out of this. But if we can't do those things, the best first step to protect ourselves is to increase tuition now, and I think you should ask me what we'd spend the money on. We would spend the money on paying, paying the obligations to our collective bargaining unit and then revamping our marketing department and our enrollment outreach. I don't think you're going to find any administrator who believes you can cut a college and grow enrollment. We can't do that. I plan to double down and select a really good team for marketing and market this college like I've tried to do in my first 10 months to show that we deserve the educational investment from the state and from students. I plan to save a little bit more money to try and handle those construction projects, and I've already done some really tough decisions, which is the last document I want to show you that I've marked confidential. And I shouldn't say I did this. Our team did this, and this is a confidential document that I haven't shared with anyone except the board, but it shows you the positions that are vacant right now, that were budgeted for the year we're in now, and we haven't filled them. And that's the only reason why we still haven't gone in the red this year. These positions, and I counted them, they're over 20. I have continually not allowed my staff to hire. The staff is literally doing more with less. You can see those positions, and some of them I've even identified as potentially not being budgeted in the next year. It's really sensitive information, and I hope you can keep it to yourself. But this, this right here, folks, this shows I'm serious. And the administrators that work with me have asked me, we need to fill these positions, we need to fill these positions, and I've said to them, we need to do more with less if I'm going to ask this board to help us with tuition. You can see that there's over a million dollars of vacancies that have not been brought to you, and I want to fill those positions. I think they're vital to our product, but I won't do so until I can figure out what's going to happen with our tuition, what's going to happen with our state aid, what's going to happen with our enrollment. I talked for a long time, I'm sorry about that, Madam Chair, but this is important enough to me that I thought you should hear it publicly, and I hope that any questions may happen.
All right, then, we're going to open this up for discussion with the board members. First, is there anybody who has a question or would like to start the conversation? Okay, Trustee Barry?
Schedule C. When you reached out to these community colleges, do you know if any of them just had renewed a mill or passed a year or two without a new mill?
I will answer from my memory, Trustee Barry, and then I'll ask my staff if they have any memory. Washtenaw Community College is on the ballot this coming November. Schoolcraft Community College went to the ballot last year at the same time we did, and they did what was called a Headley override, which, are you, you're, okay.
I saw.
In your business, you know what that means.
I saw what they did last year, too.
I'm sorry?
I saw what Schoolcraft did last year.
Yes. I don't know. Does anyone else know if any other of these community colleges went to the ballot on a millage either last year or this year? We usually hear about it, Trustee Barry, and I haven't.
I think last year it was only Schoolcraft and us.
Yeah, Wayne, us, and Schoolcraft were last year, and Washtenaw is this year.
Anyone else? Yes, Trustee?
I'm curious about anticipating our costs are going to go up relative to the student population that we're serving. So, we're going to probably have to expend more money to provide the services to retain students who are coming that are not prepared. So, I don't know how to put a dollar on that, but it just seems like our costs per student are going to go up if we're going to provide these students with the kind of service that they need, mentoring, counseling, advising, the whole bit. It seems to me like the student services usually is about 14 percent of the budget.
Yes, that's right.
So, I'm anticipating that that percentage will probably increase if we're going to retain the students, and that's going to be a cost that should be incorporated in the... retain the students, and that's going to be a cost that should be incorporated into the increase that we're thinking about, the tuition increase that we're thinking about. I'm just wondering how you're thinking about that.
Well, you're right, that that is a looming problem. Right now, our best case, our best test case of that is the Detroit Promise that has funding from outside philanthropy to fund coaches that are doing that kind of service to students. And I've talked with Dr. Herbst about this. We both believe that that is the best service model to increase retention and grow our outreach to underserved or at least not engage populations from our history. But that, that's, that's going to be expensive. And right now, we're relying on philanthropic support to do it. That will not go on forever. Again, the governor keeps talking about giving that kind of coach support. The Detroit Regional Chamber has put money behind that. I don't know whether that, the Detroit Regional Chamber will go away with that or if the state will come in with that, but it's something I'll be asking them to do. And if that doesn't happen, then we'll actually have to come step up for those kind of communities. And we already are doing that pretty effectively, but today's population needs more support. Delivering the education everywhere but in community colleges is significantly more expensive. We are asked to do the work that high schools did when I was in high school, and we are asked to start off more students now that are on their way to four-year institutions than when I went to four-year institution. We're in the middle. We're being asked to do a lot, and I think that's why you're seeing community college presidents respond and say, we're being asked to do more. I'm sorry, board, I need, I need more funding to do it. And we're also tapping industry, we're also tapping the state, and none of us are enjoying it. I hope you can tell I'm not.
Like, growing our enrollment is really requiring that we retain students better.
There are two things that I think we're going to have to focus on to grow enrollment. Reach out to communities that we haven't reached out to very well, and we're doing that as recently as yesterday, and retaining our students.
But retaining students requires tutoring and all the coaching that you're talking about. So somehow or other, that has also got to be reflected in the tuition increases. We can't do it with the amount of money that we're spending right now per student. We don't have those tutoring services that are extensive. We have good tutoring services, don't get me wrong, but they're, they need to be more extensive.
I agree.
Okay.
Trustee Barry?
Justice, have a second.
Oh, trustee Thor.
The charts that you've shared with us are about the in-district rates at all these different community colleges, but I know you're also asking for an out-of-district increase. What's going on with the other community colleges? Do you have any information on that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bain, who I think helped develop this chart, but I'll, I'll tell you, trustee Thor, the bellwether for each reporting is the in-district tuition. And I don't know if that's because they, the reporters just don't want to overwhelm the reader with data, or if it's because historically, community colleges have just done the same to their in-district and out-of-district. But everything I found was hard to...